And I'm going to call our meeting to order. Welcome to our October work session meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya if you could please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Ag Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ag Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Absent.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to salute the flag, after which, we're going to have a moment of silence for several individuals sadly remarking the passing. You'll notice that our superintendent, Dr. Gruccio, is not with us, and we are going to have a moment of silence for her mother, who passed, Mrs. Mary Ionetti, also Dee Marinelli, a longtime employee of Ag Harbor Township School District, as well as former student Anthony Swizenny.
Dennis Rockwell.
Yes, Dennis Rockwell.
Can we say, please say that into the microphone?
Yeah, Mr. Dennis Rockwell, and a longtime teacher here in the district, also passed within the last two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Delabarka. I didn't get the word on that. Go ahead. I didn't get the word on that.
We had a former student that passed away, J.B. Garrett.
Okay, so after our flag salute, we're going to have a moment of silence for all of them.
Our flag, one nation, united by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, after that sad start, we'll try to talk and think of happier things, and looking forward to getting on with our, again, our October work session meeting. We've had a very good opening to school so far. We're heading into fall. Lots of great things going on in the district for our students. And I'm going to turn the, turn the microphone over to our assistant superintendent, Mr. Steve Santilli, who will deliver a few reports for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. We're going to present our ESER III and ARP presentation at this time, which will also Okay, so at this time, we're going to discuss our ESER III or ARP spending plan, which is in multiple phases and has been in multiple phases during the course of the last year or so. First thing we wanted to do was share with you and with the public an important timeline. So ultimately, this timeline really identifies, you know, a focus on our period of spending. You can see here that this money, grant money, is going to go until 2024. And then throughout, you can see the timeline, most importantly, where we are now, where we had our pandemic team meetings at each of the schools recently, coupled with our presentation tonight, as well as what we anticipate to be our board resolution next week, as our application to the New Jersey Department of Education would be due. And then, of course, finally, our grant submission in November. So a few things to focus on here. There are allowable uses, and we're going to talk a little bit about allowable uses during this presentation tonight. You can see here that 20% needed to be identified for what they refer to as learning loss. One of the things that we focused on here in EHT was the fact that, in terms of learning loss, a lot of that work took place during the summer. We went 18 months in a global pandemic. We're still not out of the woods yet, as you can imagine, but we wanted to focus our efforts this past summer, not just on ESY, but extended ESY, reaching out to our students in regards to their needs, to focus on literacy, making up what we call learning delay rather than learning loss, to get kids back to where they needed to be. In addition to that, there's 80% of allowable uses, and we're going to talk about a lot of that here tonight as well. Everything that we've discussed, whether a focus in our pandemic and school pandemic team meetings, to our district meetings, to public session like this, our focus always goes back to when decisions we're making go back to the district learning goals. As you can see here, a focus on improving student achievement, supporting climate and culture, and EHT pride, and again, expanding those community partnerships. Every decision we make, we want to really truly be a focus on these learning goals to be able to continue to move us forward as a district. So.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
Money, money.
Money, money.
I guess we'll share. So, back in May, when we first rolled this out, we had the award of the 9.5 million, which is the very first line of the grant. September 15th, the state came out with a notice and said, "We are going to allow several sub-grants for specific purposes," and those allocations are listed here. And for the board, it is attached to your board docs as a reference.
Thank you. One of the things we're going to do is we're going to be breaking down a lot of this information in regards to allowable uses, and you're going to see that ESER III, the ARP program areas are listed here. There are five areas. One of the things that I wanted to point out was for multi-tiered systems of support. When we discuss that particular area, it actually encompasses the other four areas. So there's a lot of crossover here. So in an effort for meeting the needs of continuity of learning or mental health and supports, things like that, MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of supports, is a focus on all four of these areas. So first thing that we want to focus on, and we're going to go back and forth with these two slides, each of the slides are going to be set up similar to this. So the very first slide, like this, for the continuity of learning, materials and resources, first you see there's needs assessment and rationale, data to support that, and also product and implementation. So with product and implementation, those are things that would have occurred in the summer, are currently occurring, and things that we're looking to continue to do moving forward. Obviously, needs assessment and rationale, I think it goes without question, we all know why we're here and why we're talking about this, and that's because of the global pandemic. You're going to see that theme throughout. In addition, the next slide is going to focus on public comment from the committees and also the pandemic team meetings. So what you'll see is a trend as we go through those five areas, and I wanted to be able to point that out now, because I'm not going to keep revisiting it, obviously, as we have this conversation. But you can see for product and implementation, everything from our summer programs to our use of Linkit, we're able to use that for RTI as well, for response intervention, everything from Wilson reading certification to letter-certified teachers, really focusing on literacy, decodable text materials, headphones for Chromebooks, and after-school programming, really expanding that as well. Those are things that we had implemented in the summer and are implementing now and will continue to implement. In addition to that, this list is a combination of what we heard in public comment that is not only going to support the work that occurred in the summer, but will also support the work that is currently in place to be able to help expand and help us grow. So some great ideas that came out of the pandemic team meetings that are really here and what's listed here is going to enhance. And it was nice to hear, and in each of these five areas, the things that we already have in place or that we have been doing to meet the needs of our kids, this was really enhancing that. So you can see that list, and again, I'm not going to read every single thing here, but just some things that jump off the page, making sure that we really do assess our technology needs. We have a one-to-one initiative at the secondary level. We have Chromebooks at the elementary schools, but ultimately, making sure that we really are truly reaching all of our students, right? Making sure that we have enough hotspots if we ever had to go back into some type of closure, making sure that every student had access and equal access, okay? In addition to that, you know, here's all our middle school programs similar to Eagle Academy. Again, with everything that we've been seeing with SEL, mental health coming out of this pandemic, things for consideration, and the list goes on, okay? Mental health and supports was one of the other areas, again, broken down with the needs assessment, data to support, and product and implementation. You can see the things that we have listed here for after-school mentoring, that is something that is rolling out right now, will continue for the next few years, universal screener for social-emotional needs, continue to explore that as well, and then additional behaviorists, partnerships with therapists for actually having access to true therapists here on campus, again, partnerships and community partnerships that focus on mental health, and then additional training for our IFRS teams and some of our transition programs, all things we had in effect and continue to have in effect right now. In addition to that, what came out of public comment in the school pandemic team meetings was, was again, this list to help enhance all of those things, things that we're really focusing on, making sure that we support here. Everything from wellness centers that could potentially help support our middle school students, check-in-and-check-out counseling programs, additional behavior specialists. So there's a lot of things that are already in place here, and again, these are things that will continue to enhance the work that we're currently doing. Next was personnel, again, broken down with our needs assessment, data to support. The product and implementation, you can see additional general education staff, special education staff, things we already have in place. We're already exploring RBTs, which would be supporting our BCBAs, our behaviorists within each of the buildings, and then additional interventionists to support tier-one and tier-two needs, okay? What's important here is to support tier-one and tier-two needs, something that we feel as a district is very important. In addition to that, again, this list enhances the work we already have in place. You can see here what came out of those public meetings, increased interventionists, something that we just focused on and we have been focusing on. In addition to that, additional nursing services, educational support staff or service staff, additional custodial staff. So personnel across the gamut, you can see the work we've already been doing is actually being enhanced here with this list and being supported, because it just shows that there is a correlation to what we hear from our stakeholders compared to the work that we've been doing. Multi-tiered systems of support, as I discussed, technically speaking, these are things that are intertwined in all four of the areas. So you can see here for product and implementation, again, everything from letters training, iReady, things that we focus on for literacy initiatives, as well as Linkit as a data warehouse, making sure that we can track our student data, where were they, where are they now, and where can we anticipate them being in the near future. In addition to summer programs, and once again, additional staff and technology to really focus on differentiating a tier-one and tier-two interventions. Some things, and additional things that came out of that were math interventions and resources, again, an SEL screener, that correlation with mental health supports that we discussed, and then also mental health and wellness programs and PD, and professional development, as you know, is very important. We can't just continue to add programs and throw programs at our staff, students, and our community without providing necessary professional development. And finally, we have health and safety. And again, what's health and safety in this particular world is things that we focused on, that we've presented here in public, right? So the world we live in right now are things that we've always wanted to do, and now it's almost forced us to do these things and implement now even at a quicker rate, which is great. Additional playgrounds, outside classrooms, playfields, right, additional fields for use at the high school, and then also additional PP and other health-safety needs. That came out of our product implementation, things we've been working on, things that you've heard us talk about here in public already. And then also in the, in public comment, again, enhancing those things. Additional outdoor classroom seating was something that was discussed, and there's some examples we listed here, like having a canopy over the patio at Eagle Academy, because then they'd be able to use it even on inclement weather days, for instance. Assess communication and connectivity needs throughout the district. Then training for health plans. One of the things in conversations with our nursing staff, we've noticed, is that we are seeing increased, let's say, health concerns coming in from our students. And one of the things that was expressed was making sure that we properly train people that are on the front lines, everybody from teaching, classroom personnel, support staff, to even bus drivers, you know, making sure that they have the means necessary to support students that might be in crisis. If they go into a seizure, diabetic shock, whatever it might be, we want to make sure that they're ready to react, and that's something that we're seeing more of from that health and safety aspect. So one of the things that we focus on here and what we talked about in each of the pandemic teams, everything, in reality, it just continues to go circular, right? So we did talk about data, and we took a look at the data to support the decisions that were being made. We took a look at this collaborative approach for improvement. Everything focuses back on our learning goals. We then got stakeholder input, and each of the school pandemic teams, the district pandemic teams, even conversations that we've had as a board, at the committee level, have helped contribute to what you saw on these slides tonight. Then we make decisions based off of that, and that's where that needs-driven and content-specific approach comes in. And then guess what? We're going to do it all over again, right? And we have been doing it all over again. And whether it was ESER I, ESER II, and now ESER III monies, this is the approach that we have found as a district has worked for us, continues to work, and we're going to continue to push forward to make sure we enhance our current programming to support our students, our staff, and the entire district. So, back to money.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a brief moment to explain, and very slow, what you're going to see as we go into budget for next week. So we have buckets, we talked about during our budget process. We have the local fund budget, and then we have grant funds. I'm going to go into the next slide to explain why you see in the local budget, there's going to be more certified staff and more capital improvements, but then you're going to see a reduction in our local budget for added district cost replacements, as well as professional development. You're going to say why? It doesn't make sense. Here's why. Right now, if we hire a teacher, certified staff specifically, could be a behaviorist or a social worker or any of those roles, that have a certification, our cost to our taxpayers is $55,000 starting salary, whatever the starting salary is. The state of New Jersey picks up the employer's share of payroll taxes, as well as the employer's share of matching the pension, the pension contribution, so that when I retire, 70 years it'll be there. The state pays that portion for current, that's the top row is currently, we pay staff, the state pays the taxes and the pension. If you use federal funds for a certified staff member, the state says, "Pay me back." So the district will have to pay for the certified staff salary, as well as the tax contribution and the pension contribution, we have to pay that to the state. So where it normally would cost $55,000 for a staff member, it would actually be, what last year's ratio was 145%, we'd have to take out of the grant money. So to get the bigger bang for your buck, the staff we're talking about will be funded out of the local budget, certified staff, but how can we afford to do that? Every year, we spend money on professional development, we have added district placement costs, things that we traditionally would cover in our local budget, we will then put in the grant fund, so we get the bigger bang for our buck. Say that again. Local funds, $55,000 cost, or 7.65% for FICA, and 35-plus percent for pension. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? I wanted to say it's a slow-at-work session, so we can digest it. So when you see our presentation next week, when we go over the budget for our plan for ESER, it's going to be over this $10 million number, because it's going to show you the grant fund and the local fund swap out, because you're going to be spending so much in the grant fund, but we have to show those interventionists, show those other positions that we're talking about, so. Any questions on that? Well, we'll do it again next week, but I just want to plant the seed, start thinking about it. Thank you.
Okay. So, and to wrap up, you know, really what it comes down to is, again, another, just another visual, another image in regards to where we are, and it really comes down to making sure that we take a look at our data, we monitor, we continue to monitor, we prioritize our spending and prioritize our needs, and then we make those decisions based on spending, as Ms. Anaya just talked about, and being smart about it and fiscally responsible, because we could have very easily gone and spent grant money on, let's say, staff, but because of your approach, then obviously, we have a different way to think outside the box and a different way to approach it. So again, you know, more to follow next week. We wanted to make sure we gave the board and the public a timely update. We did take into account, really, all of the great information we gathered and we gleaned from all the school pandemic team meetings. I had an opportunity to participate in the high schools. I know many of us administratively participated in different meetings that took place, and there was some great feedback from all stakeholders, which was, which was nice to see, and also supported the work we already have in place. So again, more to follow next week. And Mr. Castellano, that concludes our presentation for ESER III.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santilli and Ms. Anaya. Excellent. I think we're on the right track. I think that was very informative. Do we have any other presentations tonight, or are we going to head into finance?
We were going to do the finance and ops report, and then go into the finance and ops presentation.
Gotcha. All right.
Okay, thank you.
So, at this point, I'll ask for our finance committee report, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We held our meeting October 5th at the Alder Middle School in this boardroom. Myself, Mr. Price, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Solagi, Ms. Byrd, Ms. Anaya, and Ms. Moss were in attendance. We spoke about the ESER III. We discussed items. We discussed the ARP budget buckets, as you saw. Some questions and discussions came up in our committee meeting, and they are as follows: Were students consulted and looked at in these decisions? Were some of the questions that were asked? Population of teachers who may not have been in a classroom in a normal school year, those hired in 1920 and since? Programs that grow with kids? Content area programs? Subject matters in specific way? K-8 programs that expands every year? Investigatives? Taxpayer effects? Effort to keep, flat, or reduce? If state aid is cut, we'll reevaluate the application? Student retention? Marketing plans to keep students here? ESER? And then we also discussed uniforms, that came up, the possibility of uniforms, khaki pants and polo shirts for Ag Harbor Township students, for middle school and high school specifically. So these were the things that we discussed at the committee level in regards to the ESER. Next, we discussed transportation, updated runs, and you can link to the updated runs in your Google box, as I always say, if you have anything, you can always go back to your Google box. Facilities, we discussed the Fernwood Middle School elevators, summer 2022, it looks like it's going to be, and it'll be a four-week job. We discussed the partial roof at high school bid, summer 2022, but bid opening will be this winter. Storage at high school under the bleachers, $56,000 for lighting and vents and storage boxes. Swift slave wall parking lot proposal, scaled down but will be presented. LED replacement project, vendor was put on notice to stop the project. Swift windows, mason work and window installed to be managed by the architect of record. The high school greenhouse, new vendors are being considered since there was a lack of bid response. The Miller parking, oh, Miller parking lot lighting came up. We have a proposal to be recommended for the October 19th meeting to add lighting at the Miller School. Business office, the audit begins October 18th. Budget calendar to be included on October 12th will be pushed to November work sessions since it hasn't been reviewed by Dr. Gruccio yet. Then we have action items tonight, Ms. Anaya will certainly chime in on that. Then we also are going to have action items next Tuesday, gifts and grants, $965,000 and frees up lease purchase funding, so purchasing more buses and PA systems are some of the things that are going to be coming out for action. Also, a heating, ventilation, air conditioning renovations proposal bid, 18 units for $5 million, and an alternate for $8 million. Capital reserve withdrawal, accept the Aspire Grant Award for year 2022, out-of-district tuition agreements, and we also discussed all their lighting closer to the building, because some of us, when you go out, that's always an issue this time of year, especially with the adjustments on the, on the lighting. So that concludes my report, and if there's any questions, if not, we'll turn it over to Ms. Anaya, if that's permissible.
Okay, just to add to that, the Alder lighting, like tonight is another example. It was just before 7:00, it was already dark out, the lights hadn't kicked on yet, because it's programmed by hours. We will tweak the times now that it's getting darker. And just to add one item up to, when I spoke about the buckets and I wanted the community, I told my committee, I would reiterate this in the, in the community meeting, with the swap out and the creative financing, we want to hold this next budget harmless, we want to come in at zero, flat, or even give some money back if possible, if S2 keeps funding. So if the budget comes out from the state and the governor holds back money or does something funny with the new budget, possibly new governor, we're going to have to reconsider this budget for the ARP, and actually, although it gets submitted in November, you can amend grant budgets, and we would have to reconsider how we're funding and maybe just have to fund it with the 145% allocation. But we wanted you guys to be rest assured that we're not going to negatively impact taxpayers by doing this creative financing. It was really just to get the biggest bang for our buck from the grant, so. I said I would say that out loud as a business manager, so there it is. At this time, we wanted to do a quick presentation. On this agenda, we did have an action item for the swift slave wall parking lot proposal. Dr. Gruccio isn't here, we are going to go ahead with the recommendation, the actual presentation. If there is questions, uncertainty, any kind of gray, or, you know, we can push pause and take action next week like we normally would, but we want to at least get the information to you since we brought it up in our September meeting work session, okay?
All right, so, we had taken a look at really updates in regards to traffic pattern and egress, as you can see here. We broke this down in regards to our overall concerns, arrival dismissal concerns, and basically the recommendation. We've gone back and forth as well with stakeholders in regards to those that are in the trenches every single day, from administration, school and complex administration, to also teachers, to make sure that, you know, what we're taking a look at, what we're seeing, you know, is true to the eye. I know I've been out there quite often, as well as many of the other central administrators. It's been truly an all-hands-on-deck approach. You heard Dr. Gruccio previously present in regards to this plan, and we know that at the beginning of the year, we have our normal everyday hiccups, you know, the pictures that are taken at bus stops, the pictures that are taken at schools, the things that parents love to do, and we certainly encourage that would slow things down. But I can tell you, we've gotten to a point where we feel as if we've come up with a resolution that, that isn't just because of something that's in the moment right now, but something that we know is going to continue to grow as a systemic potential issue at the complex, and this is really a long-term fix, probably something that maybe when slave wall primary, for instance, was added on, wasn't taken into consideration in regards to the district office and parking of all the adults that work in the district office, coupled with parent pickup, and people needing to have to park to pick up their children. So I think that with those add-ons in that complex, egress and parking, of course, probably wasn't taken into consideration, and that's why we want to take a look at being able to resolve that now, because we're going to continue to grow. So, enrollment has increased, yeah, two Ds, but it has increased, and will continue to increase. And ultimately, what we know is that in slave wall primary is where our pre-K is housed, and ultimately, we're going to continue to grow. That's our intent, is continue to grow that program, and we know that we have classrooms that are going to be continuing to expand there. And COVID, of course, another overall issue. We know that right now with this pandemic, you know, a lot of parents maybe are not comfortable putting their children on a bus, so there is more pickup and drop-off, that's a reality. Inclimate weather is another reality. We can see those peaks and valleys on a sunny day, typically not as big of an issue, but when it's pouring rain, let's face it, you don't want your child standing at the bus stop, so we have, again, an increase in drop-off and pickup. And then, of course, like I mentioned, consideration for additional parking, egress, and so on. Drop-off, now, we do, I hope you haven't witnessed what you see in that picture, but there have been times it seems pretty bad, and ultimately, drop-off does cause traffic backup. We've had the support, as you see, of police. We've had the support, as you see, of police in the beginning of the year, and we can't thank the Eggerford Township Police Department enough for their support. They were also part of this conversation. We had multiple meetings with them and their support. And at the end of the day, again, they also shared and recognized that the systemic problem here is probably the fact that we needed to address these systemic issues upfront and for the long term. Bus exchange is a conversation that isn't just about drop off, but more for dismissal and pickup. And what we have noticed, and we've gotten down to the wire right now, we're getting it as tight as we can. We've worked out all the kinks, but we do know that you take a look at that maximum efficient time and between the swap that has to occur where we're picking up at both locations and swapping back and forth to pick up the second set of students, it takes at least eight, at least 16 minutes. And ultimately, I wish it was seconds, but it takes 16 minutes. And ultimately, we know that if we have one pickup location, we can really help to eliminate these delays by having the buses in one area. So you can see enrollment. It may not be a huge increase to you right now from the 1273 to 1297, but we do know that, again, in slave wall primary, you can see the asterisks there and, you know, we anticipate another 75 to 90 students moving forward. So we know that there are going to be more parents needing to pick up, especially in that particular location. That means more traffic and so on and so forth. In addition, we wanted to share like we typically do timelines. You could see that, you know, the struggles we had in that first week. Following two weeks, of course, things got a little bit better. And then, of course, we did present to the board on September 14th, which was our initial parking lot recommendation, were changes in parking and egress. And then, of course, still, the week of 9/27, we kind of really narrowed it down to where we currently stand right now. So recommendation and the breakdown. So you will see there are three phases listed. And what we'll do is we will take you through first here, this is the front of Swift. So one of the things that we focused on was in phase one, being able to break through the island. There's basically an island there. We would be able to do construction breakthrough. In essence, what it would do is allow for us to have a very long, you can zoom out there, would have a very long pickup and drop off location. Our intent would be to put procedures in place to allow for students from the 2-3 building to be able to go over to meet their siblings, for instance, if need be, over into K-1 building at Swift to be able to have pickup and drop off all in one location. Okay? Next part of the phase was to be able to have 28 spaces. Now, this is the Slave Ball Elementary parking lot. And ultimately, what would happen here is that would allow for us to not have to swap anymore in terms of the buses. This will cut down on that time of having to go back and forth and will allow for us to, you know, minimize those delays and get our students loaded on the buses safely and then off and to their bus stops. And then the final phase for phase one, or the final part of phase one, is going to be in front of Slave Ball Primary. And you can see there'd be about 53 spaces here and the intent being that it would allow for parents to park. Because with our pre-K students, we don't allow them to just go and go out to vehicles and things like that. We want our parents to park. We do want them to come in, be properly vetted. And it's a different, you know, it's a different situation with our littles and with our pre-K students, and we want to make sure that everyone is safe. So ultimately, these 53 spots would allow for those students to be able to be picked up in addition to other spaces that are there. So ultimately, phase one, three different parts to that project right now for phase one. And Andrea, I don't know if you want to discuss the findings?
Sure. So we wanted to break into three phases. I will zoom out and I realize I did not attach the PDF and if you clicked, we couldn't get it, so we'll attach the PDF. We have three phases because phase one can happen in 15 to 20 days and ultimately cures the issue that we're having right now. Once that is evaluated, the expansion of Swift Drive that Dr. Gruccio spoke about, widening of it so that we can have two through lanes and a return lane, does involve township permissions and is going to take much longer. We're calling that phase two. Phase three is as needed if we need to then break out and make additional parking spaces behind Slave Ball Elementary. We're going to do the analysis, of course, of phase one, see how that works out. We may not need phase three. Finances-wise, we broke the project into three pieces. Phase one, to break the island and create additional parking is $492,000. And as we said, could be done in 15 to 20 days by the vendor. We wanted to roll it out. We had worked on this for the past month. This might be our seventh or eighth version of what we truly needed and which way to design the parking for the buses as well as the parking for the staff and students, or for the students and parents, staff and parents, students don't drive. So it took a while to get here, but ultimately, we scaled it back to say, what do we need right now, what can happen right now? And even whilst classes in progress, because the first phase, you know, the swift breakout is going to happen over a weekend period, and that will help with the, on the long lines in the morning. The additional parking to the right of Slave Ball Primary, that will also help staff move over while they work on that big island in the middle. So it will happen while school's in session and can happen in 15 to 20 days. So that's that piece. How can we afford this project? So we did, the board did allow us to put $10 million into capital reserve, majority of it for HVAC units. That is still a priority. This being a safety issue, we feel like we can put some of the other projects that were not related to HVAC on hold and may be able to get this done this year and maybe delay something else. We would fund it out of our capital projects fund, which is a different bucket, not part of our local supply money, if you will. And of course, next steps, we always do, there's a resolution needed to begin the project and construction would take 15 to 20 days.
And that concludes our update, Mr. Castellano. So if you'd like to entertain questions, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna start it off with you're seeking board approval just for phase one at this point.
That is correct.
Okay. Board member questions, comments?
And in fact, I can just piggyback off of that. That's correct. And phase two and three are optional and as you see siloed from the rest. So if we don't have the funds to expand Swift or to do the other piece, it's not dependent on each other. So they are separate three separate projects.
Got it. Mrs. Sullivan, that...
I agree that it's nice to pick up children at the same spot. Are pre-K and kindergarten going to be able to do that over at Swift? Are they gonna, are you going to take that move over also?
So pre-K is at Slave Ball Primary. Pre-K would remain at Slave Ball Primary. That is our current plan right now to take a pre-K student over and walk completely across the entire complex. And Mr. Del Barker, you could probably speak to this as a former principal, but it would take a month of Sundays to do that. They're great, but I, you know, we take them from Talons and it's a very controlled process. So I think that what our focus would be, would be working on a plan to make sure that for those that have, because in, you have K-1 at Swift, you have 2-3 at Slave Ball Elementary, to have one pickup location and drop off location in front of Swift for those students. Because our 2-3 students would be going through Swift and then into Slave Ball Elementary. We'd be able to, you know, as older students, we'd be able to make sure staff can transition them accordingly and we would have a plan in place for that.
The reason I ask that is because they're going to have to get back in line and go over to the other school.
If you, if you are, if, you know, based on the plan, if you had a child that was in pre-K, that would, that would have to be the way it would work right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd next, and then Mr.?
Oh, thank you. A question I do have, this will supply immediate relief that we need. There's no doubt that it's something that we need to do. It's just the cost is a bit of a concern. And I'm not sure what the other two phases will be costing. For instance, phase two, when we get to that, or phase three, if we do need to get to that. Do we have any idea what the other two phases might be budgeted for? I mean, what would be the budget on them?
Yes, sir.
Also, this is the primary concern. How are we with the other schools as far as the parking and the student drop offs? They're pretty good? They're flowing all right? Or is there something that's going to be needed attention in the future at some of the other locations as well?
So that's a great question, Mr. Price. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Ms. Anaya answer the finance side of that. But in terms of the other locations, to our knowledge, you know, some of the things, and we typically will always address anything that comes up. And I can give you an example, for instance, at the high school, one of the things that we realized was that by reversing the drop off in the morning, which we had done, costs really no money other than some lining and some movement of our portable barriers. It allowed for a lot more cars to queue up, for instance, in the morning for drop off, which then didn't allow for them to back up on the high school drive. So we typically will always address that, you know, with the least resistance in terms of having to spend money. At the current time, I'm not aware of any other issues at any of the other buildings in terms of drop off or pickup that we would need to address like this.
Just procedurally, we talked about placards or some other identifier as a process for pickup, but not construction wise. To your point, Mr. Price, I did add the diagram and the proposal to the agenda items so that you have them, but I will answer that now. Phase one was $492,000. Phase two, which is basically the entirety of Swift, expanding out, breaking up curbs and reestablishing three lanes, is $540,000. And that, again, is going to take a long time, being those involve the township and fire hydrants and things of that nature. Phase three, which, again, we don't anticipate, but we wanted to put on the radar in case it is needed after all, is $118,000. And that is to break through a current curb and do some painting in the back to create the additional parking spots. So in total, if we did all three, which we are not recommending administratively, is 1.1 million. But we did get the proposal as far as what the full scope would be. We are just recommending right now phase one. With that being said, we may not even need phase two with the widening based on traffic flows and we have to reevaluate, but just to keep it on our radar, we wanted to get the full scope.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
So I just wanted to make sure, so the construction project that's around 480-some-thousand, that, right, that project can be done in 15 to 20 days?
That's correct. That's the estimate from the contractor, provided with weather. That's why he gave us a window, because inclement weather, but...
Okay. And that will provide immediately, I think you said immediate relief to the situation right now?
Yes.
Some relief.
For traffic, for traffic and staffing issues, having to stay late past their time, correct?
Oh, yes.
Because it's morning traffic issues and then evening staffing, late bus issues. So then our students would actually get home earlier as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Salagi?
Shandra, could we do one, skip two, and do phase three? I mean, I think phase three was only $118,000?
We can, once we get into it. And phase three, Steve, if you would use your cursor to show, it's basically breaking through that center island where this parking has like a curb breakthrough, making another lane and then into painting and creating the parking spots in there. It's not that it's expensive, it's just it may not be needed if the parent consolidated pickup works. It will be needed if we have to have parents pick up at both locations, which we're trying to prevent just because of efficiencies if you have multiple students in the same complex. We can definitely recommend that when we feel administratively that it's necessary, but at this point, we really believe putting the buses in the center and creating the additional parking on the side and allowing for a longer drop off and pickup at Swift will resolve what we're dealing with. Additional enrollment coming for preschool, phase three also includes the island. If you ever come to Central, there's an island that has just a few cars to the right, where Steve's pointing now. One of the, another proposal is to put some additional parking in there just because as additional students come, there may be more staff involved. And that's also another area that was identified as needed if we need more parking. But we will have to wait until, you know, when they get here, not when they get here, but once we actually know the full population to move forward with that recommendation. But that's definitely not needed for now, so we're just trying to address this, what we know we need to do and knowing that once it's done, based on how traffic patterns change, the expansion of Swift Drive may also have to change. And based on more students and staff, potentially additional parking. So we could do it if we needed to go out of order. The answer to that is yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I think a big concern that is still kind of looming is the bus traffic and the parent traffic. And I think that was one of the problems, the buses coming in to get into their spots. Can we stagger some sort of timeframe so that either the pickup will be cleared out and buses can come in? Because there's only one way in and one way out. Or is there a back access somewhere that we could take the buses out?
So in this plan, there's not really a back access, let's say. But what we have here is the first car queuing up here to unload, and then this whole row allowing for parent drop off.
It's not that, though. What I'm thinking of is on the main road, all the cars coming in with the 30 buses or 40, however many buses we have, they all come in on the same road, they all go out on the same road. So you're going to have a backup unless we can split it somehow or time it differently.
Do you want me to answer that? So where Mr. Santilli was going is Swift car traffic for 9:15 morning, you were just talking morning, is going to go straight up. Straight through will be busing and preschool, which is at 9:30. So we don't anticipate the clogging that's happening because there's no drop off at Slave Ball Elementary. The drop off will be at Swift by having that consolidated one stop. Does that make sense? Because before, we had traffic going right where that little turn is into Slave Ball Elementary area, but that's not going to happen. Those will be just for buses now. So parents strictly on Swift side, buses in the center, and then the pre-K, which starts at 9:30, will be over to the right. So 15-minute delay does help with traffic. And the one thing about primary now is they may park all the way down Swift and they may take all the parking spots in our administrative lot, but they, they do have enough spots. But we will make safe spots by making that additional parking so that they're not parking right on Swift Drive.
And in a lot of our collaboration with the township and with the Eggerford Township Police Department, we did look at alternatives as you're mentioning. You know Castle Park is right here, our fields are right here. Unfortunately, this even looks like it could be an egress, you know. However, it's cut off. So there's not a way, we've explored every option because we were thinking, of course, along those lines, is there a different way for buses to come in and out? And to our parents. Unfortunately, we're kind of landlocked here based off of how we're set up, unfortunately. But we do believe that with this extra queuing and the 15-minute delay with them starting at 9:30, it will help because parents would have the opportunity to drop off here if they needed to, and then they could even come down in here. These buses would be unloading, have time when they're making that transition as well.
Anyone, anyone else, questions or comments on the plan? Mrs. Albarter? Ms. Albarter?
I just want to comment, I unfortunately have to drop my high schooler to the high school from time to, you know, from time to time. And the way they switched it around, it worked so well. And I'm thinking that it's with the same way where, you know, you wait and then somebody tells everybody to move up and then everybody drops at the same time and then everyone leaves. And it actually is so efficient and it cut down the time, at least 10 minutes off dropping my daughter at the high school. So if it's going to work the same way at Swift, it should work a lot better. And the only thing I was also worried about is once people go back down Swift Drive, if they're going to be making a left onto Ocean Heights, I mean, we might need a longer, like left lane. You know, right, right people will be a lot easier, people turning right.
And that's the analysis with the widening of Swift, which we are going to pursue with the township and get all of our ducks in a row so that if we do see it as an issue, all the things legwork is already done. So we are moving forward in the planning of that, but the recommendation won't come until we actually know it's a need. But it's a lot of work behind the scenes with the township for that.
Okay, anyone else? So what I'm going to ask of the board is, is there, what is the pleasure of the board to adopt a resolution for phase one this evening or to place it on next week's agenda? What's the pleasure, the pleasure of the board? Everyone?
Get it started.
Everyone okay with that? Okay. So then, on our agenda, there is 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4, correct? Okay, so then, on our agenda, there is five point two, five point three, and five point four, correct?
That's correct.
So, do we need?
I modified the language for five point three to read "Resolution to Approve Phase One of the Swift-Slavol Parking Lot Project." Because we didn't have it as a, for short action.
Okay, so how will, how will five point three read again? Say that to me?
Resolution to approve phase one of the Swift-Slavol Parking Lot Project.
Okay.
And I've attached the proposal, the image that wasn't there, it was just a slideshow before. If you can refresh and see that.
All right, so then I'm gonna be looking for a resolution on five point two through five point four, correct?
That's correct.
May I have that motion, please? Second. Any discussion? Any at all? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Albarca? Yes. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solari?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We're going to move on into curriculum at this point. And I'll ask for our curriculum committee report.
The curriculum committee met at five o'clock on October fifth, 2021, in the Alder Avenue Board Conference Room, in person, yes. In attendance was Mr. Delabarka, Mr. Ireland, Ms. Moss, Ms. Anaya, as well as myself. Ms. Moss and Ms. Anaya presented the SR3 budget plan for discussion. More services, both during and after school hours, were discussed to assist students with both academic and social-emotional needs. The committee suggested asking students about the return to school and also investigate more social-emotional learning connections in the county. Field trips and professional development were also reviewed. Suggestions from this and other committee meetings, as well as this school-based pandemic team meetings, would be reflected in the final presentation to the board tonight. So basically, we viewed what we did at the curriculum committee. That is it.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments on curriculum? Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Sure.
I just have something, if I could go back to finance and operations, if you had a moment?
Yes.
The donations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did miss one thing I wanted to just highlight during our committee report. For our gifts, grants, and donations for action for next meeting, just a couple of things that are on there that are out of the ordinary and exciting. So a couple of board members had sent me information from school boards that there is a grant available for, for lack of better words, electronic stuff. And I'd let you, some of you know that we did apply for it, Kevin Ernaby and I. And we actually got notice last week that we have nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to help offset. It's a reimbursement, so it's for the Chromebook order for this year that we were using lease purchase money for. So they're allowing us to offset that. So the lease purchase money that was going to be used for that can be used for things previously authorized in that by the bank who's financing us, which includes some buses and facilities equipment and IT equipment. So similar to what was already approved, for example, we may get more projectors now, or we may get extra switches, or we may get two more buses. So that recommendation's gonna be coming on the agenda. Unified sports, we have a new assistant athletic director who has been working very hard on trying to get funding for us to implement unified sports. It's too close for fall. We actually have some ducks to get in a row, but we did get fifteen thousand for the high school and five thousand each for older and former schools. And Ms. Perron will be making a recommendation on how we're gonna be using that. We did get a hundred and fifty thousand KN95 masks from the Office of Emergency Management, which was accounting. We put in a request last year, and they actually just got the delivery, and we sent it, and we picked it up. And it's in our warehouse, ready for FMX orders. And everybody knows from our schools, you put the request in through our work order system, and you can get it. We did get two hundred and fifty-sixty face masks from Books-A-Million, right here in Maze Landing, well, out there in Maze Landing. We got a hundred and fifty gift bags for the staff donated by Fusion Church, which was also awesome. We had eighty backpacks filled with school supplies donated by the Asper United Methodist Church. And one hundred hanging shields, a hundred table shields, two hundred boxes of disposable masks, fifty bottles of hand sanitizer, two hundred face shields donated by Cindy, I don't wanna mess up the last name, I wanna say Hune, owner of Pinky Nails, which all of us love. And we also had a donation of Windows 10 desktop computer donated by Elisa Ziegler to the high school. So there was a lot going on, and it just reiterates, you know, our community partners and how much we love our community and how much they support our school. So formal letters, just you all know, formal letters do go out after you take action to accept them. The board secretary on her behalf does send formal letters to all of them to thank them for their donations. And just want to share that as a highlight for our committee report. Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, I'm gonna move into personnel and just check with Dr. Charlton, is there anything for public session?
I do not have anything, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, very good. Since Mrs. Byrd is not with us tonight, I thought it made sense for Mr. Santilli to go ahead and give the reports, since he's got all the notes. If that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. So on Tuesday, October fifth, 2021, members of the Policy Committee met in person to discuss policy agenda items. Present at the meeting were Pete Castellano, Christie Byrd, Patrick Ireland, myself, and Casey Gifford. The following policies and discussions occurred at the meeting on October fifth. The old business consisted of mandated Strauss-Essmay policies and Board of Education regulation consisting of both policy and regulation sixty-four seventy-one, school district travel, that were reviewed for their second and final readings. This policy and regulation saw changes to the administrative code sections that were rewritten to align with the state and the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Office of Management, and Budget LMB circular. New business, sorry. New business consisted of mandated Strauss-Essmay updates with the following policies and Board of Education approval regulations requiring approval as follows. Policy and regulation seventy-four thirty-two, eye protection were mandated revisions to provide more detail as to a school district's requirements to provide appropriate eye-protective devices. Policy eighty-four twenty, emergency and crisis situations, and regulation eighty-four twenty point one, fire and fire drills were mandated revisions to align to the updated statutes related to fire and school safety security drills. Policy twenty-four twenty-five, emergency virtual or remote instruction program is a new and mandated policy. The policy will require two readings, with the first reading tonight at work session and the second reading at the regular meeting on October nineteenth. This new policy includes the statutory language stating the commissioner shall allow a district to apply to the hundred-and-eighty-day requirement one or more days of a program of virtual or remote instruction provided to students on a day or days of school or schools of the district that are closed. A school district is required to submit their program of virtual or remote learning instruction to the New Jersey Department of Education by October twenty-ninth, 2021, for approval. Also, policy fifty-four thirty, class rank was further discussed by the committee with minor changes to include a cum-laud recognition status, as well as the addition of academic achievement and recognition language from policy fifty-four forty. Abolishments would be policy fifty-four forty, which is honoring pupil achievement, is being recommended for abolishment as it is not a mandated policy, however, is now included in part in policy fifty-four thirty. Additionally, the committee, at the request of committee members, also discussed policy fifty-five eleven, dress and grooming for students, as well as policies that impact the participation of homeschool students at the middle level in after-school activities and athletics. While no changes are being recommended at this time, administration will provide updates to the committee in the coming months. In addition, administration will be seeking input from stakeholders inclusive of students in regards to the dress and grooming policy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. Any questions, comments? Mrs. Sullivan?
I just, I was reading on the policy, emergency, no, excuse me, for the emergency and crisis situation. Did I read correctly in there that we need to have a police officer on the grounds when we do those, in addition to our own security? I thought I read that in there.
So what it references is that a law enforcement officer shall be present at a minimum of one school security drill in each school year in order to make recommendations on any improvements or changes to school security drill procedures. Typically, what we do is we do notify our school liaison in regards to the drills. And oftentimes, you know, Eck Harbor Township Police Department will participate depending upon the type of drill and their availability.
Question, I'm sorry. Have we made a decision on allowing homeschooled or out of our school district participating in sports? Was that completed or no? I see it was discussed, but are we going to, are we gonna?
I think we're gonna pursue it, but it's gonna take some work. Is that being accurate?
All right, because I knew that was on a front burner, I was wondering if it's still on the front burner.
It's part of, as part of the report, we discussed that we would be providing updates to the committee in the coming months. And ultimately, we are doing some additional research as this impacts actually three different policies once we get ready to move on that. So we want to make sure that we cover all the details, you know, in an adequate fashion.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Solari?
Policy twenty-four twenty-five, emergency virtual or remote instruction. It says more than three consecutive school days before virtual would kick in. So what happens if they declare a state of emergency and we don't have three days consecutive off? Couldn't we just go to virtual, or do you have to wait until we have three days consecutive off?
Declared, right, go ahead.
Yeah, so two different pieces. So one part of this is, this is actually in the law. So this is when the governor or the Commissioner of Education or the Department of Health declares an emergency. So that's when this three-day rule comes in. It's not just that we're closed. It has to be a declared action for that three day to kick in, for it to count.
So would we have to have three days, would three days come off of the hundred-and-eighty days? Because damn, in the next paragraph, it talks about the hundred-and-eighty days.
So it needs, you need a hundred-and-eighty days for students. So essentially, what this will do is, if there's that public health emergency that we have to close by virtue of somebody higher than us, then this says those days, if it's more than three days, will count for virtual. That's how you're getting to the one-eighty.
So you would, you'd still have to make up those three days?
If it's, if it's more than three days, then those three days would be continued in and added in, and you wouldn't have to make them up?
Okay.
Does that make sense? So if it's just one day?
Well, I just didn't know if it had to be three days before a decision was made, if we were going to go, if the students had to miss three days before virtual would be accessible. I don't, well, it says.
So this is, the language is strictly from the statute, it's exactly how the law is written?
Well, that doesn't mean that it's right.
I, I know, I'm just clarifying that Eck Harbor Township did not write this. This came from the law that they passed while we're in the emergency, because typically, a virtual day would not count for school. So this is a way to make sure that if we were doing a virtual, a virtual instruction day, and there was this declared state of emergency or public health emergency, and we were closed by somebody else, that our days would count. This is all this is saying. So.
I guess we'll have to wait till it happens to see how it's gonna work.
So for example, for example, if we say, unfortunately, say we went to red and COVID went crazy in Atlantic County, or in our school district specifically, and Atlantic County came in, and the Department of Ed came in, and said that we are, have to be closed for fourteen days, then those days would count. We have a program in place to go virtual.
Okay, say we got five feet of snow, would we have to be, would we have to be home for three days before virtual could kick in?
That's not a declared emergency. So the only reason, snow days-
Well, no, because it caused a state of emergency.
But not for this particular instance. If the governor, if it's declared for this particular instance, and it's specifically due to a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency, or directed by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure, the Commissioner of Education shall allow the district to apply the one-hundred-and-eighty day. So the idea that snow days counted last year because we were already in a public health emergency. So that's why if you wanted to take a day last year, you could. Right now, we're not in a, we're in a state of emergency, but we're no longer in a declared public health emergency.
Okay.
It is very confusing, and I completely understand and feel your pain and frustration.
Well, does, okay, since this is the state law, do they have regulations to go with this?
There are no regulations now.
Okay.
Unfortunately, there are districts and schools within districts around the nation that had to go into quarantine. We hope that's never gonna be us, but, so that's why the law was passed. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
I was just gonna say, in the event that we had to, Eck Harbor Township, you know, would be prepared to transition into-
Correct.
Remote instruction.
Correct. We have a plan, and that's in place. This is just saying we need to have that plan. And this is really just mimicking what the law is. So we have those limited circumstances.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I just didn't know if these, this wording restricted us. I guess, compared to what Tamika just said, if this wording, if we'd have to wait the three consecutive days, even if they said, you're gonna have to close for the next month, we know we're gonna be out for three days, can we, could we transition to virtual without missing three days of school?
So it would depend, and it would depend on the emergency. So if the, for example, the bottom paragraph of this policy says, in the event the state or local health department determines it's advisable to close or mandate closure of the schools due to one of those things, you can go into the virtual program. So for example, if the state's gonna come in, or the county health department through the state is going to come in and say, you need to close for ten days due to a fourteen-day quarantine period, you know right away, it's ten days, so this would kick in. If this is, as you said, possibly maybe another type of emergency that's not three days, I don't think it would kick in right away. I think it's very fact-specific, but the, what the idea behind this was, for the reasons you're closing, it's going to most likely be more than three days, because you're quarantining for a certain period of time.
Okay.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, go ahead.
So the three days, could that, I don't know if it's reading as if, you know, we have three days to transition to implement or kick in remote learning? Is that what?
It's like it's restricting us.
I think, what kind of reason may that gives you three days?
So the first three days would count if you're part of the bigger fourteen. What essentially is saying is, if you're closed for more than three consecutive days. So what they don't want it to be is, you're closed one day, and that counts for virtual. Because in New Jersey, we don't do virtual education under the law. You have to be in school in person a hundred-and-eighty days. So this is saying, in order to get around that one-hundred-and-eighty-day in-person requirement, if schools have to be closed for more than three consecutive days, then we're gonna count those virtual days for the year. And that's what happened, if you remember, in March of twenty, when we went out, we were closed. So we were closed that whole year. So then the next school year in 2021, they said, that's a carryover from that public health emergency. So anytime we had to close for 2021, they automatically counted and we could be virtual. So anytime we had to close for 2021, they automatically counted if we could be virtual because of that original initial closure for March, April, May, June. Because that was more than three days. It's confusing.
Anyone else? Anything else on policy before we move along? Okay, very good. We, we do have to take action on 8.2 in order to get those two readings in this month because that's mandated, and we have to have it in place, which is just the one we were talking about, correct? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion then on 8.2.
Motion?
Second. All right, you got that? Mrs. Slogey, Mr. Ireland, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, communications. We have an updated board calendar. There's an early graduation request for you to look at. And our favorite time in the meeting, where we're going to look to Mr. Delabarka to tell us what is new, exciting, and thrilling in the New Jersey School Boards Association.
Good evening, everyone. Now, you've heard some of this discussion in closed, but the Atlantic County School Boards Association's hybrid meeting is next Wednesday evening. You should have received your registration applications already. You need to go online and log in, and then you need to select if you're going to be there in person or virtual. So make that decision, and they'd like you to make that decision soon, not wait till next Tuesday, if you can. Okay? That's the process. In-person begins at 6 o'clock with dinner at Atlantic City Country Club, and at 7 o'clock will be the virtual meeting. The topic, of course, is S.R. funding, and hopefully that is successful by next week. The other reminder is that you already have a reminder regarding the New Jersey School Boards Virtual Workshop, which begins October 26th. I know we are all registered, so you just have to go follow the process and try to attend as many of those meetings as you can. There are offered this time around meetings in the evening also. So there will be some evening meetings, and there's county-wide meetings based on the counties. So they're trying to cover all those different aspects that we've been used to over the years when we went in person. And that's all this week, so thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delabarka. Looking forward to all of that. We're going to go to public comment now. If anyone's here with us, I won't read through all of our, all the rules. I think you all know them by now. Any of our public here with us? Any comment, questions or comment? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. We're glad you joined us. Any further, anything further from board members? Administration? Good job, guys, tonight. Filling in for Dr. Gruccio. Everything went very smooth. Excellent job. Okay, then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I want to thank everyone for coming out, everyone for watching us at home. We hope for everyone to have a wonderful fall as our weather gets chilly and a lot of great things going on in the EHD school district. So by acclamation, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.